All right, so now.
All right, very good.
What? That's where, no, it's already on, we're using that one instead.
Are we ready down there, gentlemen? Good. Let me call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of October 13th, 2020, and the time is 10:01 a.m. The first item on the agenda is a presentation on the West Palm Beach Pension Fund. I think we've got some good news to share, right, Mr. Frost?
Relatively good news, Mayor.
Everything's relative, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Jack Frost, and I'm pleased to have the honor of being the Chair of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund, along with my fellow trustees representing them here today, Captain Joe Ahern, Captain Troy Marchese, Craig Colley, and Dana Fergakis. The presentation today is by our actuary, Jeff Amros, and his company at this point has a policy that they are unable to attend actually any meetings at this stage. So, we do have Jeff hooked up on the phone, and I'll be in charge of the technology here. But I will now turn it over to Jeff. I think every one of you, except for Commissioner Fox, has heard his presentations in the past, so you can just picture that smiling face in front of you. Thank you. Jeff?
Excellent, well, thank you, everyone, and good morning. And I just wanted to start by saying thank you to the Jack and the... Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, I just wanted to stop by thanking Jack, the Mayor, and the Commission for allowing me to participate in this meeting virtually. As Jack said, our company has a policy that won't allow me to travel right now, so again, I really appreciate it. Just by way of introduction, my name is Jeff Amros, and I'm an actuary with Gabriel Roder Smith and Company. I have about 25 years of experience as an actuary, and I've been the consulting actuary for the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund for the last 10 or 11 years. So today, what I'd like to do is provide you with an overview of the state of the West Palm Beach Police Officers Pension Plan. And I'm going to try to keep my presentation relatively short, 15 to 20 minutes, but please feel free, as I'm going through it, to interject with any questions or concerns you may have. Some of you may remember I was here in October of last year to discuss the state of the pension plan. And since that time, obviously, there's been a lot that has changed in the world around us, but there hasn't been too much movement in the funding metrics for the West Palm Beach Police Pension Plan. Specifically, the funded ratio has stayed around 95%, which is a great level to be at, and the required city contribution has been relatively stable and is now at about 24% of payroll. And it wasn't too long ago, and I'll be going into the presentation in a little bit, but just, again, as way of background, it wasn't too long ago that the, this pension plan had some bigger issues. In 2014, the required city contribution was about $10 million, and it was increasing each year. The funded ratio was decreasing each year, and the level of benefits was being reduced as state money was going to help fund the pension plan instead of going to the police officer's share plan. But again, since 2014, there's been very significant changes in the health of the retirement system. Today, we'll discuss two of the main reasons why the plan has seen better days recently, and those two reasons are the issuance of a $50 million pension obligation bond and strong investment returns inside the pension plan. And we'll also talk about how the pension obligation bond has been working out for the city. We'll talk about the current level of the required city contribution, what we know about future levels of required city contributions, and we'll finally wrap up with a comparison of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Plan to other Florida public plans. But before we discuss these items, let me just give a quick introduction into the pension benefits that are provided to the police officers in West Palm Beach. The slides three to seven of our presentation review the plan provisions of the three benefits that are provided to the police officers. So if we start by turning to slide three in the presentation, we see that the main pension benefit for police officers, which is calculated by multiplying three items together, is multiplying the benefit multiplier, times the years of service, times the average final compensation. And the benefit multiplier, which is different in each plan, in this plan, it is actually two different numbers. It's 3% benefit multiplier for each year of service before October 1, 2011, and also after September 30, 2017. And it's 2.68% for each year in those intervening years, from October 1, 2011, to September 30, 2017. Police officers can begin receiving their benefits at their normal retirement date, which is the earlier of three different age and service criteria. It's the earlier of age 55 with 10 years of service, age 50 with 20 years of service, or age 25, or 25 years of service, regardless of age. It's also very important to note that the police officers help fund their pension plan benefits. They contribute 11% of pay each time they get a paycheck. Each biweekly paycheck, 11% of their pay is taken out and put into the pension plan. So, Jack, if you're able to turn to slide four, here's where we review the second component of the benefits provided to the police officers, and that's the drop program. This allows police officers to retire for pension plan purposes but continue working for the city for a maximum of five years. During the period of drop participation, an officer's monthly pension plan benefit is accumulated and is paid to the member when he or she terminates employment with the city. These payments of the drop earn 4% or 8% interest, depending on the performance of the assets inside the pension fund. Slide five reviews the third component of the benefits that are provided to officers, and this is the share plan benefit, which is funded by annual premium tax revenue. And the amount of annual premium tax revenue is allocated equally among the active members, provided they work a full year. To give you a sense of what benefits this provides to the members, the annual premium tax revenue for 2020 was $1.6 million. There's approximately 285 active officers, which translates into roughly $5,600 per officer for this past year. Slide six through eight goes through a numeric example of the calculation of the regular benefit, the drop benefit, and the share plan benefit for a sample police officer. In the interest of time, I won't go into reviewing these unless you have questions now or at the end, I'm happy to go back to it. So let's go to slide nine to discuss the history of the pension obligation bond.
And Jeff, Jeff?
In July of 2016, the proceeds from a $50 million pension obligation bond were deposited into the pension plan. As a result of this deposit, the plan's funded ratio increased from 82.4% to 97.1%. The amortization payment on the unfunded accrued liability, which was the main component of the required city contribution, decreased by about $6.5 million. If we turn to slide 10, we can see that the issuance of the pension obligation bond has worked out very well for the city so far. The investment return on the $50 million that was deposited into the pension plan has been about $15.3 million as of June 30, 2020. The city has paid about $6.9 million in interest to the bondholders. So based on this, you could see that the interest earned in the pension plan exceeded the interest paid to the bondholders by over $8 million, $8.4 million has been how it's worked out in the city's favor thus far. And as discussed before, in addition to the issuance of pension obligation bond, the pension plan has seen strong investment returns, and this has really helped the pension plan. If we look at slide 11, we see the investment returns the plan has seen since 2012. These returns have been extremely strong and have averaged about 10% during this eight-year period, and that's 10% per year. After this presentation was prepared, we also were informed that the return for fiscal year ending 2020 was estimated to be at 5.6%. And while that is a little bit short of the assumed rate, it's still extremely good considering the pension plan was probably minus 15% or minus 20% back in March of 2020, when the pandemic was impacting the financial markets at the greatest level. So although 5.6% is where we'll end up about for the fiscal year, it's short of the expectation, but it's a much, much better position than we were in six months ago. We turn to slide 13, we'll see the results from our October 1, 2019 valuation report, which determine the required city contribution for the fiscal year we're currently in, fiscal year ending 2021. And there's two components of the required contribution. The first component is the employer normal cost, and essentially, what this represents is the value of the accruals from the officers in the pension plan. This is important, and we're going to talk about this on the last slide also when we compare the value of the benefits provided in West Palm Beach versus other plans in Florida. But specifically for this plan, the employer normal cost is about $4.2 million, about 16.25% of covered payroll. The second component of the required city contribution are the amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability. And based on Florida statute, when there's a change in the unfunded accrued liability, the pension plan gets to pay that off over a period of time not to exceed 30 years. The amortization payments in this plan are $1.95 million or 7.54% of covered payroll. So from this slide, we can see that the required city contribution for fiscal year ending 2021, again, the fiscal year we're currently in, is $6.15 million if the payments are made throughout the fiscal year and $5.93 million if they were made at the beginning of the fiscal year. So let's turn to slide 17.
Jeff, this is Jack, two things.
Yes.
First off, the Commissioners, if they would like, we have these slides available for them, and they can be forwarded to them. So, because, you know, there's a lot of information that you're giving out here. So if you just let us know. Secondly, and maybe we should just go ahead and forward it to everybody, if we could. Secondly, for the Commissioners, our assumed rate is 7.5%. So when we were talking about the 5.6, it's a little lower than the 7.5, and we used to be at 8.25. We've lowered it over the years gradually to work with the city, and we're now at 7.5. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And, yeah, I could certainly forward the presentation to everyone so they could see it. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the 7.5% assumption in a little bit. But slide 17, if we could jump to that, that talks about what we know about the level of future required contributions. And where the city contributions are going to go will largely be dictated by what happens in the financial market. If we have more investment years, like we've had over the last 10 years, we're going to see downward pressure on the required city contribution. If we see investment years, like we experienced in all financial markets from 2000 through 2009, we're going to see upward pressure on the required city contribution. But that's an unknown, we don't know what's going to happen there. There are some things that we do know. So the first thing is that the Board will be reviewing two assumption changes in connection with the upcoming 2020 valuation report. And that 2020 valuation report will determine the required city contribution for next fiscal year, fiscal year ending in 2022. So again, two assumptions that we'll be reviewing. The first assumption is the possible lowering of the investment return assumption, which is currently at 7.5%. And like Jack said, we've made a lot of progress in moving that investment return assumption down from 8.25% down to 7.5%. Well, as we do every year, we'll be discussing, looking at that assumption, making sure it's still reasonable. The second assumption change that we'll be looking at is actually a required change based on the Florida statute. And this will require us to use the same mortality table that the Florida retirement system is currently using. This new mortality table actually has higher mortality rates than the current table. Based on that, we would expect a decrease in the required city contribution due to the updating of the mortality table. So to summarize that, there's two potential assumption changes. One is mandated, and we know we'll get a reduction in the city contribution as a result. And the other one is something that we look at year by year, and that's lowering the investment return assumption, which we may not lower it at all. We may lower it and offset the decrease we get for the mortality changes, or we may lower it that it results in a net increase in the required contribution. That's conversations that we'll have with the Board at the upcoming meeting. Another thing we know is that there is $6.2 million of unrecognized investment losses as of October 1, 2019. And just to give you a sense, if we just recognize these unrecognized losses immediately, the required city contribution would increase by $600,000. So that will, that basically means that over the next several years, we have $600,000 of upward pressure on the required city contribution. And finally, the last thing we know is the return, the actual return for fiscal year ending 20 is going to come out to be around 5.6%. Based on that, we expected 7.5%, we only got 5.6%. There'll be a very modest actuarial loss due to that, which will put small amounts of upward pressure on the required city contribution. If we turn to slide 18, we can review the funded ratio of the plan. So what is the funded ratio? It's simply the amount of the liability that's covered by your plan asset. As of October 1, 2019, the funded ratio in this plan was about 94%. And that's very healthy when compared to other public pension plans across the country, and even specifically in Florida. In Florida, for our plans, we have roughly 130 plans, 90 of which are on my team, the average funded ratio is in the mid to upper 80% range as of October 1, 2019. So this plan actually is at 94%, which is a better place to be. Finally, slide 20 shows a comparison of the employer normal cost for several of the public safety plans in Florida. Remember, the employer normal cost represents the value of the annual accruals for the officers in each of these pension plans. So it's a representation of the level of benefits provided in these plans. And this will actually give you an idea of how the benefit level in West Palm Beach Police Plan compares to other Florida public pension plans. It's not meant to be an exact measure, since many of these plans are using different actuarial assumptions, which could result in different employer normal costs. But it should give you a good general idea. So from this slide, we see that the employer normal cost for West Palm Beach police officers is, as I said before, 16.25% of pay. The average employer normal cost for 20 public safety plans in the state of Florida, you could see, is 23.08% of pay. Again, this slide is just meant as a way to benchmark sort of the level of benefits in many different public safety plans in Florida. So that concludes my review of the PowerPoint presentation, and now I'll turn it over to you to see if there are any questions or comments you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I just have a question about that last slide. I'm wondering, well, I guess in general, does the pension, is it dependent at all on the budget and the negotiations every three years? Or is this, basically, the pension is the same all the time but for, I guess, dips in the financial market and things like that?
There are portions of the pension and the budget. The multiplier is something that's negotiated from time to time, am I correct?
Yes.
Any other elements of the pension that are part of the union negotiations?
I would think that some of the other, the multiplier for one, and there are other terms that could be negotiated, but that's the primary one.
Yeah. Follow-up, Commissioner? Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, you want to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Solis Rodriguez, Chief Human Resources Officer. As Mr. Frost mentioned, the multiplier is a negotiating item. There could be some other items in terms of, like, years of service to qualify, but it's also mindful to keep in mind that it's also statutorily set. So a lot of the changes, even if you tried to negotiate them, you would still have to go and get a bill to modify the statute that governs it. So it's mostly governed by statute, is the short answer.
Thank you. Commissioners, I think that a major takeaway, and I'll get you, Commissioner, from this, is the health of the pension plan. One of the slides showed that, I think the average was like in the mid 80s in terms of funding ratio. We were at 94%, which is outstanding. And as you may hear in some of these dire economic times that we're hitting, some cities may have difficulty, some municipalities may have difficulty funding their pension obligations, because they're not in as good shape as we are. So that is, that's some good news to take away from this, is the health of our pension with respect to the city's obligations. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing up the health. I know that we all get the emails from the National League of Cities and the State League of Cities, and that is often a topic of conversation. So I'm pleased to see that in West Palm Beach, we're doing well. My question actually has to do with the listing in the agenda item. I wasn't sure if we're also discussing the West Palm Beach, is it a separate pension fund for employees of West Palm Beach? Or is this, it doesn't distinguish police pension funds, so I just wanted to be sure I knew.
This is strictly the police, the fire have their separate. The general employees, basically, I think it's sort of a 401K. And there's a legacy plan. There used to be a general employees' plan that went away in the early 90s.
And will we be getting updates on those as well?
We certainly can, and that was an oversight. It was intended to only be the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund presentation. But at the Board's, you know, discretion, we can do a presentation on the pension plan for the general employees as well as fire.
Mayor, if I could follow up?
Yes.
Well, is there, you know, I don't want to cause more meetings if we don't need them, but if, I don't know, is this an annual meeting that we typically have for police? And so do we have annual meetings for the others as well?
In the past, we have tried to coordinate with fire, because the general employees is a very small plan now. Like I say, it's a legacy plan. The fire, we always have felt would probably be a good fund to also update, because similarly, it has an impact on the budget and also on understanding what the benefits are that our first responders are getting, and generally, they're quite good.
Very good, and thank you Administrator Johnson for noting. I guess this one should have read West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I think the other thing, which may not be as good of news, is that in one of the slides showed the potential increase or the impact on the general fund of an increased amount that the city's going to have to contribute depending upon certain factors. I don't know where that slide is, but I think what was in the $700,000 range potentially? Am I right on that?
Yes, right there. Well, actually, the $700,000 was to the good.
Okay.
Then the other is regarding if we lowered the assumption rate, any further than 7.5.
Okay, all right.
And there, at the bottom there.
And we may have some modest investment losses, I guess. Okay. And we don't know what impact that might have on the general fund. But it's too early to tell.
I don't know if, Jeff, at this stage, I don't think it would be a major one.
Okay.
Yeah, Jack, I can't hear all the questions, but it seems like the question now is if the 5.6% return will have a significant impact on the required city contribution? And the answer is no, because it's a little bit short of the assumed rate, but then there's asset smoothing that takes place, and then there's an amortization of the loss. So that by itself will not have a significant impact on the required city contribution.
All right, so that is good news.
And two points. Well, we were talking about other municipalities here being funded in 80%, 85%. There are some, like Chicago, I think some of their funds are funded only to 30%. And I think the state of Kentucky is funded at 18%, where these, the sponsors have not been paying in their required contribution for years and years. Same thing in New Jersey, they just stopped paying because they didn't want to find that money in the budget anywhere. So again, I'll reemphasize the Mayor's point, and we try and work hard to maintain a healthy fund. On the brighter side, just actually, the bottom number is right now, our fund is about $392 million, so roughly $400 million, which puts us, for a municipality, as a pretty good-sized fund. And we have just recently made a commitment to make an investment in the grand, which is coming forward. And we're planning to invest $5 million, which is about 20th of what they're looking for in their initial funding range. So we feel it's very prudent, the numbers look very good, the projected returns. But even more so, the benefit that it can provide to our officers, our first responders, is just a wonderful benefit to the city.
Yeah. Jack, can you all speak to, and I know in our meeting, I asked a question, the advisors and whether we have any minority firms that are acting as advisors to the pension fund?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Glad you brought that up, because our fixed income manager is Garcia Hamilton. And they manage about 30% of our money, which 30% of $400 million. And it's a minority firm. Jana Hamilton and Gilbert Garcia are the two principal partners. Gilbert actually has been in the forefront of a program involved with an organization that helps place undergraduates in summer internships in Wall Street, minority undergraduates. And he actually was recently honored for that work, along with Mayor Bloomberg. So, and then I know one of our law firms, Saxina White, is a minority firm. And perhaps there are others, but, you know, it's something that we do want to keep in mind.
Please, please, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Jack, I just want to make sure I understood what you were just talking about a little bit ago, when you said we're looking to invest into the grand. Do you mean the housing development project?
Yes.
Oh, fascinating. So we're going to be investing into that, and that's workforce housing, so hopefully will benefit some of these officers that we're discussing, is that?
Exactly, and we've been very careful to ask them, there are extra benefits that they can provide for first responders that they plan to do, which is basically an early opening, early window for them to be first in line. There are certain things they can't do out of fair housing, but whatever they can, they're planning to do.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any other questions, Commissioners? Well, very fine presentation, thank you all very much. A lot of good news, and we look forward to more good news in the future as we get on the other side of this mountain, hopefully.
Many happy returns.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jack. And thank you, IT people, for making that happen. I mean, we saw his smiling face there, and we heard his voice, and I'm sure that wasn't easy to bring together, so thank you. Okay, now, item two, AIPP presentation from the Administrator of Public Arts and Culture. So Billy, has that always been your title?
No, that's a new title.
Wow, okay, all right.
Hooray. Let me get myself settled here.
Public Arts and Culture.
Okay, before I begin, I'm going to set the stage and give you a quick timeline for the rebranding and master plan updates. So in 1985, the AIPP was established. In 2014, the ordinance was amended to include the private sector as 1% for the inclusion of public art. In 2014, the first master plan was adopted by the city. In 2019, at the end of, and in beginning of 2020, AIPP Committee along with staff, we started... we started to look back at the adopted master plan. It served a functional purpose, and it was only meant for five years. So we looked back at the five years, and we looked at both our successes and our challenges, our opportunities that lay in front of us, and anything that we missed. And so, what we found the last five years is that we have been able to bring in international, national, and local commissions. This has been done both initiated by the city, but also in collaboration with internal staff, such as the Community Events Department, Parks and Rucks and Engineering, as well as with the CRA, the DDA, and the A and E District, and most recently, our first public-private partnership with the related company. So what this means is that the strength of this program has been its ability to introduce to residents and visitors artists with diverse backgrounds at various stages of their careers and working in a variety of media who offer us a distinctive, creative communal experience to enhance the visual and cultural environment of West Palm Beach. And so, when the committee and staff got together, we started asking ourselves, what is the key question here? And so moving forward, we must always ask, what role can art continue to play in enriching our public life? And so I'm very proud to welcome you to Art Life WPB. This is our new brand, a new logo, a very distinct, it's very West Palm Beach, and it distinguishes us from other municipalities and other programs that have an art program. And so now, public art, Art Life WPB, it says that public art is for everyone. The AIPP is now rebranded as Art Life WPB, and such is the framework to produce future art projects throughout the city's distinctive neighborhoods. The name is inspired by our collective belief that in West Palm Beach, we live, work, and play in spaces in which art is a daily experience and a common source of inspiration. We take pride in how we, how our surroundings reflect the spirit of living in West Palm Beach, a spirit we share with our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and visitors. So our life is Art Life WPB. Our mission, to shape the character of our city through the power of public art. Our vision, that we are all part of the creative force shaping our vibrant city and way of life. Our tagline, "Public Art for an Inspired City." What we value, communal expression, public art is a platform to explore ideas in diversity and experience creativity, the unity and diversity, that art does connect us, and it celebrates our neighborhoods as unique enclaves of character, culture, and heritage. We are inspired engagement. We believe in the power of public art to spark social involvement and foster a positive future. Freedom of exploration. Art Life WPB promotes art that is unlimited in ideas, creative risk and innovation, and delights in discovery. In advancing our artists, we champion artists who reflect the nature and pride of our city, exhibit growth and rigor in their craft, and with each opportunity uncover new abilities to advance their art. The strategic goals, to build capacity and understanding of art in relation to quality of life, to follow best practices, to seek opportunities so that art can be integrated into the community, the fabric of community life, to advocate for creative design, both in public and private buildings and infrastructure, to build the city's reputation as an arts destination, to provide opportunities for local artists to reflect the cultural makeup of our city, and to distribute public art equitably throughout the city. We do so with a built environment, climate and energy, education, arts and community, economic development and tourism, equity and empowerment, and neighborhoods first. We will have four public art categories. Temporary artwork, these are short-term in nature, they're meant to be experimental, they're, they can be very mixed media. Permanent works, these are artworks that become part of the city's public art collection. Neighborhood projects, these are often smaller scale, and they'll fit into the fabric of the neighborhood, and they'll have, there'll often be substantial community involvement. And large-scale projects, these are multi-year endeavors in order to commission and produce projects on an impressive scale to draw local, national, and international interest. The overarching guidelines for the artworks will go back to the two things I just mentioned. In what ways is the project aligned with the Art Life strategic plans, and in what ways does it support the city's strategic goals? And with that come ordinance updates, so that we have a master plan and ordinance that align with each other and support one another. And so the purpose and intent has changed a little to remind everyone that the city recognizes the importance of public art. It also will have that the public art funds are separated from other city monies to support the AIPP program. The committee, two things, that members should have a demonstration and knowledge of the arts in order to evaluate what they are seeing, and that each term of office shall be four years, and after two years, a past member may reapply. Private development, the threshold to be decreased to half a million, to go back to national standards, that the nonprofits, 501(c)(3), anything over a million, they would be exempt. And there'd be two options, install artwork on development site at one percent of your total construction, or contribute seventy-five percent of the one percent. This has been lowered. City commission approval, now the developer or owner or commissioned artist would come to present, the public arts administrator would then come in and advise the city commission on the Art in Public Places Committee's recommendation. City public art, that public art includes temporary rotating installations or exhibitions as well as performative art. Donations of artwork need to be reviewed by the Art in Public Places Committee, and if a development is unable to accommodate artwork, developer may offer to commission and install privately funded artwork on city or city agency-owned property. And lastly, unsolicited proposals should not be accepted or considered by the Art in Public Places Committee. And so circling back, our life is Art Life WPB. And that concludes my presentation.
Quick question, are we changing the name of the committee?
Yeah, we can.
Instead of the Arts in Public Places Committee, the Art Life-
Art Life, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's a great suggestion.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Sibylle, for that great presentation. This is very exciting. I think that the brand Art Life just gives life to it instead of sounding a little bit more government, Art in Public Places, so I'm excited for that.
Thank you, me too.
You talked a little bit about the budget, and I appreciate you talking about where that money came from, and I know that over the years, we have received some earned media for some of the artwork. I think even the CRA mentioned some artwork, I don't know if that was Art in Public Places, but that Instagram and, and local travel magazines have covered some of these. Does the Art Life budget also include money for marketing? And there's two areas that I'm thinking about. One is whether it's events or some kind of encouragement piece for local artists to, to let them know we are art-friendly here in West Palm Beach. And the other would be to educate and inspire our residents, whether that's students who are interested in art or just general people who live here, visit here, who maybe want to know the connectivity between all of the different art pieces in the city.
So the, with the Art Life WPB, there'll be a marketing plan put together that will launch the awareness of the program and its new iteration and rebranding, and so there'll be a constant communication of that, which includes everything that you just said. And yes, within the budget, the Art Life budget, there is funding available for the marketing component.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
It just, yeah, is, so is that, is that funding from the money that we get from developers? Or is that funding that the city-
Yeah, so it gets broken down, so there's, there's operation, it would be under operational and not reserves, which I come to you for projects.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, thank you so much, Sibylle. One of the things that has stuck with me for several weeks since we spoke about the COVID-19 art program was that you were mentioning how great it was that it was, because different mediums were going to be able to be used, there was more flexibility in giving people a chance that hadn't been able to participate before. I'm wondering if some of these new categories, like temporary art or neighborhood, I was wondering if they will be offering, sort of similar to what you were saying about the COVID-19 art, that there was just a lot more flexibility in what people could sort of, how they could interpret the art that you were looking for.
Yes, and that's exactly why we broke it down into public art categories instead of, before it was medias, and that sort of restricted it. And in this way, there's opportunities, no matter where you are in your career as a professional artist, to engage. And so, and then, part of it is also that you as a, wherever, let's say you're at the beginning stages as a professional artist, these projects will lead you up to the big one, because the one where it's multi-year endeavor, we're really looking at an experienced artist. But the other ones, that's, they're, those categories are there so that you can take those risks, be innovative, and use different medias. And hopefully, that's the idea, open up that door to a wider population of professional artists.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, very good presentation. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, if you would, if you would just allow me just a, just a minute, I just wanted to-
Absolutely, Mr. Fana.
Thank you, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. I just wanted to recognize Sibylle, because she, you know, she went through that fast, and you see the Art Life West Palm Beach, this is like an eight-month endeavor between remarketing and, you know, it looks, just coming up with color schemes, and even so it'll, so it'll go on our website, it's a lot of details that go into a remarketing and rebranding effort, and then also the, working with law and an ordinance and, and doing a lot of work there. I mean, she's done a tremendous amount of work, one person. I just wanted to publicly recognize her efforts because they've been outstanding over the past six to eight months in just getting this all together. It's more work than what folks realize.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Ms. Administrator of Public Arts and Culture, thank you very much for that very fine presentation.
Thank you, very exciting.
So I, so there will be something coming to us for specific-
Yes, I'm going to email all of you the Art Life ma, uh, master plan update, and I will also email you the brand book. So you'll get all the, and they're not, you know-
But we got to do amendments to the ordinance you were saying, right?
Yes, and we're going to get all that, too.
Okay.
So I'll have to do the, get with legal to get that ACM going.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now onto item three, Consolidated Action Plan Update, from Ms. Ferriola, who's the Director of Housing and Community Development.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Administration. I'm Jennifer Ferriola, Director of Housing and Community Development. I'm going to turn over this presentation to Jeremy Hagler. He is, he is our Housing and Community Development Administrator. He and Mark White, who is also here, worked extremely hard on putting together the city's consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan that is provided to HUD to outline the goals or the items that we'll be addressing over the next five years, and then he will also be discussing the annual action plan, which talks about how we're going to be using our funding over the next year. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, and City Administration. Again, Jeremy Hagler, HCD Administrator. Today I'll be talking, or presenting on the Resolution 14920, which includes the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and citizen participation plan. So just a quick agenda, a consolidated plan overview, the citizen participation plan and outreach, the consolidated plan goals for the next five program years, the annual action allocations for this year, this program year, and then the following next steps. So first, what is the consolidated plan? The consolidated plan is governed by CFR, 24 CFR Part 91. It's a five-year plan carried out through annual action plans. The annual action plans are concise summaries that, they present the actions, activities, and specific federal and non-federal resources that will be used. Again, this consolidated plan specifically will be covering program years 2020 through 2024. The annual action plan is, this one that you'll be approving hopefully, will be the first year, which will be for the program year 2020. So the consolidated plan, again, it has to be submitted to the Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for approval. It serves as the comprehensive housing affordability strategy, community development plan, and it's a submission for funding. The funding that it addresses is the Federal Formula Grant Programs, the first one being the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investments Partnership Program, or home, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS or HOPA programs. So with the consolidated plan, we also submit the citizen participation plan. And the CPP, what it does is it sets forth, it sets forth the city policies and procedures for the, the citizen participation plan specifically with the five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, and our end-of-year consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or commonly known as the CAPR. It also outlines the policies and procedures for amendments to the con plan and action plan, the number of public meetings and hearings, and the timeframes that are required with our public notices. So when we did the citizen participation plan, we, we had targets for outreach, and of that is the broad community, all residents of West Palm Beach, minorities, persons with disabilities, and the residents of public and assisted housing. And how we, how we, the modes of outreach, how we reached them, were first through public meetings. So we did our first one due to COVID virtually, that was April 15th. Then we have the second one coming up with the city commission, October 19th. The second mode was the Palm Beach Post advertisements. We did a total of five from February, March, June, August, and September of this year. We also did an internet outreach, which we posted information about the con, consolidated plan and the annual action plan on the city website and social media platforms. And then lastly, what we did is we, we, we opened up a survey for feedback within citizens. So we had anywhere, depending on the question, between 54 and 57 respondents, and that was from March through April. So when we started this, we consulted with the Cloudburst Group, and they're a leading consulting agency within the HUD. HUD actually contracts them to, with TNA, answers questions, all forms of different, different expert technical assistance. So Cloudburst, they provided the city with a market analysis and a needs assessment, and as well, they provide additional expert guidance. So from that market analysis and needs assessment, and the citizen participation, because we had the survey, HCD, we, we formed a strategic plan. And from that strategic plan, we formulated five goals, the first being affordable housing, second, homelessness assistance in public services, third, infrastructure and public facilities, fourth, economic development, and fifth, administration. So the first goal for the consolidated plan is the affordable housing, and that is to increase or preserve the supply of affordable housing, though available to very low, low, moderate, middle-income West Palm Beach residents, and we do this through new construction, rehabilitation, financing, pre-construction, home repair assistance, and emergency repair rental, and home, homeowner housing. And one thing I would like to note is, on all of these goals, we kept them pretty general, broad. We didn't want to make it too specific, but then that way, it allows us some flexibility in the different goals that we want to accomplish through the five years. It's kind of hard to forecast everything going forward through five years. Goal two was the homelessness assistance in public services, so providing supportive services to the elderly, mentally, physically, and developmentally disabled, persons with drug addictions, homeless, HIV-at-risk youth, victims of domestic violence, veterans, ex-offenders, and as well, increasing services for education of mental and physical health, housing conditions, quality of life, and economic conditions. Additionally, through the HOPA program, the city will be providing housing support to individual, individuals with HIV or AIDS. The third goal is the infrastructure and public facilities. This is to provide and improve, public improvements and facilities to areas that serve predominantly low and moderate income residents or at-risk populations. And these, these activities include construction or rehabilitation of community facilities, parks and recreation, homeless facilities, spot demolition clearance, and public infrastructure. Goal four is the economic development. This is to increase the local economic development through loans, grants, or technical assistance to small businesses and microenterprises to create jobs for low and moderate income residents. And the last consolidated goal is just the administration. So it's to administer the CDBG home and HOPA funding accurately and effectively to comply with all federal regulations and promote fair housing rights and initiatives. So the next slide that shows the annual action plan, so this is this year's award. We got a little over a million dollars in CDBG, a little over 478,000 in home, and a little over 3.2 million in HOPA, for a total of 4.7 million dollars. So the CDB, the CDBG funding for this program year, which started October 1st, is broken down with public services, public facilities, and administration. So of the million, a little over a million dollars, we have 152,000 going to public services, 659,000 going to public facilities, and a little over 200,000 going towards the administration of the program. of the program.
Commissioners, I want to add on this slide. So essentially, the public service portion that will go to assist homeless individuals with mental health services, so that's what that funding is allocated for. The public facilities and improvements portion of it is to complete the new Vickers House facility that we've discussed. This project is 100% federally funded, so this will come in for the construction portion of it. And then, of course, the administration goes to support all the staff salaries to undertake, to support these programs, and pretty much make sure that we're compliant with it.
Then within the...
I'm sorry, another question, Commissioner?
Just a quick question, and it's interesting, then on that slide, the number changed. My question was about the administration. So within the federal grants, they allow for us to line item and amount to cover the administrative costs, that would be staff, I would guess even benefits of staff, and any administrative costs.
That is, that is correct, Commissioner. So for every grant program, you'll see a percentage, there is a cap. So for example, for C D B G, there's a 20% cap of your annual funds or any program income that you generate, there is a maximum that you're able to set aside for admin. And yes, it could, it is used, we use it mostly for staff salaries, but it could be used for consultant fees aligned with these projects, it could be used for training or whatnot, but yes, all of that is, is required or allowed by the funding source.
Great, thank you.
Then within home, for this year's annual action plan, we have 258,000 towards home, homebuyer assistance, 100,000 towards our tenant-based rental assistance, and then the administrative, this year it's a 25% with the HUD waiver cap of 119,000, for the total home of 478,000 dollars.
Jeremy, if you can explain the 25% HUD waiver, so going back, typically for home, they only allow us up to 10% admin, but because of COVID-19, they are giving some waivers for administration costs or administrative costs, because they understand that we have taken a huge undertaking with the additional COVID funding that we received, and all of the different programs that we're putting forward to address those who have been impacted by COVID. So they're, again, they allowed us a little bit in terms of, of capacity to undertake these programs.
Then within HOPA, we have tenant-based rental assistance of 2.9 million, supportive services of 100,000, project-sponsored administration of 117,000, and grantee administration for 96,000, that's the total of the 3.2 million. And then lastly, just the next steps, so the first, October 1st this year was the first year of the fiscal year, as we all know, and the first day of our program year. The next step would be city commission approving of Resolution 14920. After that, upon the approval of the commission, we would submit that, the consolidated plan, annual action plan, and the citizen participation to HUD, and within 45 days, HUD should either approve or let us know anything that we need to change. And then all of that needs to take place before August 16, 2020, or 2021, excuse me, of next year.
Commissioners, I, oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy, go ahead.
I was just going to say, that concludes my presentation.
I also want to add that typically, the action plan and the consolidated plan, they're due on October, I'm sorry, August 15th of every year, so 45 days before the beginning of the new fiscal year. However, because of COVID-19, HUD actually granted us an extra year to finalize this. We wanted to get it, to finalize it, we were already completed it, but they did allow us some extra time, just because they understand all of the considerations for COVID, all the different programs we had to put out, so that's why they were able to give us an extension to submit.
Very good. A very fine presentation. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, and I recall at the beginning of COVID, seeing announcements about your community outreach on this, and so I was impressed that we were moving very quickly on having virtual meetings to be able to still collect that community input. I'm, I'm guessing that you, I'm hopeful that you still had good community input, given that you're probably reaching a target audience of service providers and people who work in this space and provided input, but maybe, could you just share with us the type of feedback that you received?
I'll be, and we can, we'll be happy to share. Jeremy, did you have some printouts?
Yes, so on that survey, that was the primary citizen feedback, I believe that was the only feedback we got officially. We did, like I said, we had between 54 and 57 respondents, depending on the type of question. Within that, we had 46% African-American respondents, 42% white, 12% that identified with other. We also had 66% of them were female, and 34% were, were male, I'm sorry. And then, within that, they identified, so, and part of that was, we took the needs assessment, the market analysis, and then the survey, and we, that's how we came up with the strategy. So within that survey, they also, they identified homebuyer assistance is very important, rent, rental assistance is very important, persons with disabilities, as far as transition permanent housing for homelessness, to prevent homelessness. So these were some of the, the highlights, as well as they wanted to see homeless facilities, healthcare facilities, and mental health facilities. And all of those identified with either like a 60% or higher, so we identified those, those needs in the, in the community.
And I'll also add, Commissioner, so that was part of the resident feedback, but we're constantly in communications with social service providers, with our nonprofits, with our, our other agencies, with the county, just to assess where our needs are and where we can best allocate it. So that conversation is an ongoing conversation, and they were also provided feedback in terms of this plan. We needed to consult with the housing authorities, so we got assistance from them as well. So the action plan actually requires us to do that anyway, but we have that ongoing communication.
How many respondents did you get to the internet survey?
It depended on the question, anywhere from 54 to 57.
Thousand?
People.
People, total, okay.
And how many were part of the, that first public meeting we had? Probably had about 40, 50?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, yeah, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you both so much. I just had a question about, the goals are, you know, obviously really challenging and lofty, and I just wondered, is there a way for us to know what the, the actual plans are for the goals that you have? I mean, how you're going to move forward with, you know, the jobs and the public infrastructure, and just like what, what's in those categories? And, you know, also when you're mentioning some of the things like rental assistance, like how would people find out about it? Are there ways that those of us up here could be sharing this information to make sure that the right people are getting the, you know, the resources that they need?
Do you want to take that on?
Okay, so there were quite a few questions within that one question, so just, the first one being, so how do we identify within those goals? So the goals, like, like, that's kind of why I forgot before I started the, the first goal, but they're broad, so we have many activities in there, so we have flexibility of what we can accomplish or what those community needs are as they change through the next five years. Within the action plan, then what we do is we narrow it down, so then that's why we present the annual action plan, and we're saying, hey, these are the specific, you know, services or programs that we're going to be running for that year, and this is what we plan to accomplish. And HUD holds us accountable to that, too, we don't just present to you, and then, you know, we have to actually present outcome numbers, which, that's part of the CAPR that I mentioned in the presentation, and you can actually see what our goals were as opposed to what our outcomes were, how well we, we met those, those goals.
And I'll say, you don't have to meet all of those goals in that same year, so remember, your goals are five-year goals, and they're only for your federal resources. So for example, in this year, I can tell you with C D B G, we touched the public service portion of it, and we touched the public infrastructure, so that's one, those are two goals that we touched on C D B G on home, we touched the rental assistance, which is affordable housing, and we touched homebuyer assistance, another affordable housing, and with HOPA, again, affordable housing and assistance for social services. So just because they're outlined within those goals, doesn't mean that every year you're going to have funding to address every single one of those goals. And I'll, I'll also say that although this consolidated plan and action plan outlines our federal resources, we do have other resources outside of the federal funds that we'll use to, to further move forward with these goals. So that could be our state dollars, any general fund dollars that we use to allocate or to match our federal resources.
And then to address your question about the notification, so we're required to put out public notices, and so that's one of the, the very specific, always we put that out, so people are aware of the programs that we're doing, and, and they can apply or whatever, with contact information, we have email, phone number, things of that nature.
And also working with communications as well, with Kathleen's group, and putting everything out on social media, word of mouth, again, we partner really closely with our social service providers, and that, that's a big part of our, our assistance, it's making sure that we get the referrals and letting them know. One group that I can think of is Rise, every time there's a program opening, they put it out. So it really is all of those strategies combined, and how we get the word out. And I'll say, the funding that we received is very, very minimal, as you can see, it's not a lot, and you look at a million dollars and you think, you know, for rehab, a million dollars, let's say we used a million dollars for rehab, that's only for a couple of homes a year. So the resources that we have are very, very limited, but we do the best that we can to get the word out and get as many people as possible.
Any follow-up, Commissioner? Commissioner Lambert?
On that note, Jennifer, I don't know if you know this statistic off the top of your head, but I have heard in other community conversations about how much it costs annually, maybe, to help a homeless individual get off of the streets? I don't know if that's a, just, I guess, what I'm getting at is that it takes considerable resources to be able to provide services, have follow-up, that it's not just you reach out one time and miraculously, they're, they're now in a home.
Right. Armando just came over and gave me the statistic that he says between $35,000 and $50,000 a year per homeless person, and you're talking about rental assistance, you're talking about mental health services, you're talking about the case management that's needed, we're talking about, you know, it's not just one year, a lot of folks may need additional assistance for years to come. So, yeah, it's very, very expensive to provide that service.
Very good. Any other questions, commissioners? Excellent report, Jeremy, Ms. Ferio.
Great, thank you.
I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Commissioners, do you have anything for the good of the body? Okay, well, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.